Okay, calling to order a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council Glendale Housing Authority at 2:03 PM on November 14th. May we have roll call for council, please?
Yes, council members Asadrian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here.
And roll call for the authority, please.
Housing Authority members Ajinian.
Here.
Asadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Parazian.
Here.
Chair Najarian.
Here.
Okay, and your report, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on November 9th, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and our first order, our first item, I mean?
Our first item is Community Services and Parks Regarding Reprogramming of Community Development Block Grant (CDBG) City Capital Improvement Project Funds from Program Years 2018 and 2021. A council motion to reprogram CDBG City CIP Funding in the amount of $370,000 from the 2018 Pacific Natural Gas Project to 2021 Pacific Park Splash Pad Project. The council motion to approve a substantial amendment to CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plans for Program Years 2018 to 2019 and 2021 to 2022 authorize submission of the substantial amendments to the annual action plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the city manager or designee to redirect access canceled or unused program funds under $50,000 from one project to another with CDBG Advisory Committee approval. C. Housing Authority Motion to Approve a Substantial Amendment to CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plans for Program Years 2018 through 2019 and 2021 through 2022 authorize submission of the substantial amendments to the annual action plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the city manager or designee to redirect access canceled or unused program funds under $50,000 from one project to another with CDBG Advisory Committee approval. And D. Council Resolution of Appropriation to Reprogram CDBG City CIP Funds in the amount of $370,000 from the 2018 Pacific Natural Gas Project to the 2021 Pacific Park Splash Pad Project.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, Chair Najarian, members of Housing Authority. Maggie Kavarian, our Community Services Manager, has positioned herself to present this item, and in the interest of time, I suggest that you go to her directly, since she'll be presenting the next two items as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. I have a very short presentation for you regarding the reprogramming of City CIP Funds from Pacific Natural Grass to Pacific Park Splash Pad in the amount of $370,000. The reason we are suggesting to reprogram these funds is a response to HUD. They have requested from us a CDBG workout plan to demonstrate timeliness in spending down our funding, and we have a deadline of April 30th of 2024. We are concerned that this, the timeliness factor could impact future entitlements. Therefore, we are asking to move $370,000 because we are about 3.5 times over the amount that we've been awarded in our line of credit. What we'd like to do is present to you an expenditure plan that we are presenting to HUD to demonstrate that we are going to be timely by the April 30th date, and because the Pacific Park Splash Pad Project is already ready to go into construction and the natural grass is still in design phase, we wanted to swap those out and draw down the funds. We had, on October 23rd of 2023, the CDBG Advisory Committee approved the recommendation to move the funds, and then what we will do is, in the next report, we will be putting the $370,000 from the Natural Grass Project into 2425, our funding allocation plan, so that money won't be lost, it'll go towards the 2425 funds for Pacific Natural Grass. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions on the move from Natural Grass to Splash Pad, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a comment. You're also using this, this funding not only for the Splash Pad but for renovation of existing restrooms and making them ADA approved and meet the demand of the park?
Correct. Council member Devine, this is a larger project. This is the Pacific Park Playground Splash Pad Bathroom. It's, it's, it's an immense project, but because our funding is in bits and pieces, this is one part of that, which is the Splash Pad alone, and, but it is, it's a larger project. It's over $2.2 million.
Oh, okay.
Coming from different funding sources.
I see, so that's not included in this 370?
Correct. This is just for the Splash Pad.
Got it, okay, thank you, okay.
Any other questions? Questions? Well, then, I think we have two, oh, we have two council motions, one Housing Authority motion, and the resolution is council, right?
Yeah, I'll be glad to move agenda item, the one and two, for City Council.
A, B, and D?
Yes.
Did you throw in D?
Yeah, and D, yes, the resolution, yes.
So we have a motion for A, B, and D, one A, B, and D, and a second, Council member Asadrian. Roll call for council, please.
Council members Asadrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes.
Now, we have Housing.
Yes.
I'll move, I'll move one C for Housing.
And I'll second. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Housing Authority members Ajinian.
Yes.
Asadrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Chair Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, and the next item?
My next item is Community Services and Parks Regarding Status of Program Planning for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act Annual Action Plan. A council motion approving the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 CDBG Program Priorities Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Proposed CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of an RFP to Community Agencies for CDBG. Housing Authority Motion Approving the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 CDBG Program Priorities Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Proposed CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of an RFP to Community Agencies for CDBG.
Okay, and we'll go straight to Ms. Kavarian.
Thank you, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. This is our larger report for you today. This is our annual program planning that we do. We're working towards 2425 at this point for our CDBG ESG and Home Programs that are all three HUD-funded programs. Purpose of the program planning is we try to determine the program priorities for the upcoming year. We also propose to the council and the Housing Authority a CDBG Funding Allocation Plan to consider, as well as issuance of an RFP to community agencies for public social services projects and capital improvement project funds that we estimate. Again, we had met with the CDBG Advisory Committee in October. They approved and recommended the program priorities this year, this upcoming year, as well as the proposed funding allocation plan and RFP release. This is a project that, the action plan isn't just the CDBG Advisory Committee and the City Council, it also includes citizen participation. We provided platforms for community input during this time. We had in-person meeting, we scheduled virtual meetings, we also had one week-long email comment period as well as telephone comment period. We looked at data analysis to come up with program priorities. And the program priorities for capital improvement remain the same, they are in alphabetical order, no particular ranking. Health centers were considered important, homeless day centers, community centers, senior centers, libraries, neighborhood improvements, parks and rec facilities, youth and childcare centers. Under Public Social Services, employment services, homeless services, legal services, mental health services, senior services, services for the disabled, and youth services, all, again, alphabetical order. To give you an estimated entitlement funding, this is what we assume that we will be receiving in the coming year ahead. For CDBG, we're looking at about $2.2 million. This includes undesignated fund balance from previous years and returned and canceled funds that we had. For the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is a homeless, for homeless services, we're looking at $160,000, and then for the home program, 1.7 million. Breaking down the CDBG Funding Allocation Plan for next year, again, it was $2.2 million. 20% of that goes to program administration for staffing, and then $255,000 goes to public social services, and then the bulk, 1.6 million to capital improvement projects. This year, we are suggesting that community agencies receive $762,000 in funding for, through an RFP process, and then we also pre-designate city projects, city parks projects. $870,000 is set aside under PAC Ed Artificial Turf Replacement Project at half a million dollars, and then the previous report that I had just presented, the $370,000 to backfill for the Pacific Natural Grass Project. There is an RFP timeline. In September, we kicked off the program year with a CDBG virtual open house. We opened it up to 99-plus nonprofits in the area telling them about how to apply for CDBG funding. We anticipate issuing an RFP through our new online grant management system, Zoom Grants, and then at the end of November, we are going to be hosting a mandatory in-person technical assistance workshop to nonprofits that would like to apply for these funds. And then the due date is at the end of the year for the RFP submission. A few updated policies in the coming year ahead. It's mainly a federal policy, I put HUD policy, but it's a federal policy. It's called Build America, Buy America, it's the BABA Act, very important because it will affect and trigger CDBG ESG and Home CIP Funds that are over $250,000. It's a phased approach, we have to start buying American-made products if we have CDBG, if we have CIP projects. It's starting with iron and steel this particular year in fiscal year 23, but in future years, next year, it'll be specifically listed construction materials, other construction materials, and manufactured, manufactured products upcoming in 2025. HUD will be giving us a list of those items as we attend more and more workshops and find out more about compliance with the BABA Act. Along with the HUD policy, we also have recommended policies through the city. This was introduced due to our CDBG timeliness requirement issue that we're having, so we have imposed some, some recommendations. We're going to disqualify any incomplete proposals that fail to respond to our strengths and weaknesses analysis in the RFP. We'd like to reduce the number of proposals an agency can submit so they don't have more than one in the pipeline, so they can spend down their funds with one project, focus on that, and then apply again in the future years. We're also requesting that one general contractor estimate reflecting prevailing wage rates, because that is very important for the CDBG program, be included in the proposal packet. We prefer two, but one is going to be mandatory. And then a commitment to timely completion of projects, they're going to be submitting project checklists to let us know how shovel-ready they are, so when the committee evaluates these proposals, they see where they stand on these projects and the realistic timeframe of each project. And then lastly, of course, the attendance at the mandatory CDBG technical workshop, so that way they are aware of the policies and all the upcoming information. And then, just as a timeline again, in January, we review these RFP proposals, and we prepare a strengths and weaknesses analysis, and then applicants have about a week to submit a response, and then we gather all that information and submit that to the CDBG Advisory Committee individually. This is before we meet here in council chambers in March, and they review those packets. And then in March, they meet, they interview the nonprofits who are applying for funding, they make recommendations to deliberate, and then we come back to the City Council and Housing Authority in May, possibly June, for the final action plan and approval. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions or comments?
I'll move 2A.
Well, I do, I do have something. I'm just waiting for everybody else to...
Okay.
Ms. Parazian?
First, let me thank Maggie for the report, then I wanted to thank the CDBG Advisory Committee and new member to the committee. Then I have a question. Was CDBG Advisory Committee appointed by City Council since 1974 and was involved in CDBG planning process?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did you, did you catch the question?
I did not.
I didn't quite understand the question.
Okay. Question was, was CDBG Advisory Committee appointed by City Council, I mean, and 19, since 1974, and today, are they involved in the CDBG committee, involved in the planning of the, of CDBG thing? All?
Programs?
CDBG in a planning process?
To answer that question, I can answer maybe partial question. The CDBG program was started in 1974, and we've been receiving funds as a city since 1974. I cannot answer if we had a committee back in the 1970s and if it was formed, and it might be something we can ask city clerk and legal to look at, but I'm not sure when the committee formed. I'm not aware exactly when that happened.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. Just because it's a public meeting, there was a typo on the presentation, if you want to make a correction.
I did notice that, is that the specifically?
This is superficially?
Right, it says superficial, it should be specifically listed materials, I noticed that as well.
Okay, so, oh, Council member Devine?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the recommendations that you're making. Number two, where, let's see, which one are you recommending, number of contractors estimates? Oh, you have a one general, but a minimum of two estimates are strongly recommended. I would say that you should, they should have at least two, because I think the rule of thumb is three recommendations or three estimates, so I don't, I don't agree with the one contractor.
That's a very good point you made, Council member Devine, and I'll tell you where the deliberation went with the city, with the committee. The problem with general contractors is the minute that they submit an estimate during proposal season, they're automatically not allowed to bid once the agency receives funding, so because they have an unfair advantage, they know what the project is. And with these days, it's very difficult to find a general contractor, and this is a problem that all of our agencies have been feeling kind of the crunch. So, we went back and forth with this, and that's why they decided, one for sure, two is recommended, highly recommended, but again, if they give us two estimates, those two, those two contractors are no longer allowed to bid on that project, and I think that's the fear, to lose out on contractors, on good contractors.
Okay, okay, and I like recommendation number four, because that will perhaps prevent what happened with the backsplash and the grass issue in the, in the park, so those are all good. And you haven't tried the new online management system yet, have you, or have you?
We have not, we're actually working out the kinks right now as we speak, so this is the week that we're actually working on it. We've been working with these, with Zoom Grants since last month. The contract was official last month, and they've already inputted all our information, that's why most of our packet is red-marked because it's in paper form, and that's what we're doing right now, we're in the middle of cleanup and getting it to go live. We're hoping to go live on the 20th, we might push it back one week, but we are going to release the RFP regardless and have the agencies start coming up with their, putting their proposals together and then inputting into the new online system.
I'd be interested in how that, what the results are, if you get more, more results from the online grants, or it's the hard copies are better. You know, since I'm old school, I'm always hard copy oriented, but that'd be an interesting...
It should be very interesting. It's always during the holiday season, too, that the RFPs are due, so we are anticipating, hopefully, that they prefer the online system because they don't have to rush over to the city and drop off proposals and, you know, eight copies and...
Okay, excellent, thank you Maggie for that report, it's very good.
Yeah, and in light of that, my concern would be the timeline for the contractors. I mean, is it, is it, is it extensive, or it needs to be a little more extensive? I mean, how concerning is this timeline?
The timeline to submit the proposal with a general contractor, that's, basically, it's a very good question that you ask, if, and this will most likely show how prepared an agency is to submit a proposal. Most agencies are return agencies, they know the process. That being said, we're hoping that those agencies who are ready, and who are shovel-ready or who believe that this project needs to move forward, have already contacted general contractors and are getting estimates, or have an estimate, or in, or in some phase of that project. That's how we're looking at it, at this go-around, with our timeliness issue.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my issue, I do have one big concern, and that's with the proposal to spend $500,000 on artificial turf, in particular, artificial turf that will be used by children, right? And could you pull up that article? I sent this to, this article to the city manager, and it's probably just one of many, I think it was sent around to all of you, I hope? No? Oh, I asked that it be distributed. Anyway, you know, we went through this exercise, I don't know, a couple of years ago, looking at some artificial turf installations in Glendale, and I, I kind of reluctantly, you know, compromised in agreeing for us to go ahead with the sports complex and Fremont Park, with the understanding that that would kind of be the end of our, our artificial turf projects in the city of Glendale. So I was disappointed to see that this is being proposed here. Since we had the discussion a couple of years ago, there's been a lot more information and a greater attention by the legislature on the harms of artificial turf, particularly some of the toxins that leach out, PFAS and others, in, when they get, when they get very hot, and many other things, the, the lack of recyclability and, and, and other things. So, I, I have a real problem, and I cannot support something that includes an investment in artificial turf. I would hope that staff can reconsider this. If not, I'm going to have to be a no on this. I mean, I don't know at this point what, whether what we're voting on today includes that, but this is part of the recommendation, and I, I'm just not able to support a recommendation that includes a large CIP project for artificial turf.
This recommendation is part of the funding allocation plan, it's program, we're in program planning phase at this time, Mayor Brotman. Mr. Bulanikin, if you'd like to...
Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of the council, Housing Authority, Chair Najarian, members of the Housing Authority. So the project that we're, we want to allocate the 500,000 to is the replacement of the existing artificial turf at Pacific Edison Elementary. That field is used 94 hours a week, Monday through Friday, between 7:00 AM and to 10:00 PM, and Saturdays and Sundays. So that field was, the artificial turf was installed in 2014, it's near end of life, we're starting to plan ahead and work with GOSC to replace that field. So a part of the funds, we would like to allocate 500,000, it's not going to cost 500,000, it's actually going to cost a little bit more, but 500,000 in CDBG funds to replace the existing artificial turf field. New artificial turf projects, you direct staff not to bring new artificial turf projects to council. Expanding our artificial turf or replacement of natural grass to artificial turf, but this is an existing artificial turf field, so we thought that this would be an ideal project to use CDBG funds for, since it's in the low income, low moderate income area.
I think, I mean, I think we're playing with words, whether it's new or not, it's, it's a new project, putting in new artificial turf, and so I, I really don't support that. And, you know, just back to this article, and you haven't had a chance to read it, I think, you know, it's, the legislature's starting to pick this up. They haven't banned artificial turf. What, what I learned from reading this is that there had been a ban on cities banning artificial turf under Jerry Brown. Cities could not ban artificial turf. That's what has changed, and now cities have the authority to ban artificial turf. The legislature is now looking at going beyond that, looking at the PFAS issue, which I think is the real issue, and, and so I think this is going to evolve over the next few years, as the science becomes clearer and clearer. So I just think it's a big mistake, and not one that, that I'm comfortable with, for us to even replace an old artificial turf field with more artificial turf. I think we need to start looking at, what are the alternatives, what are the, what are the living materials that we can put in that location?
The professional sports industry is moving away from artificial turf, completely.
Yeah, and that has been, I think, for, I think, for a while, you know, and we went through, we had this discussion, and we knew that, but it's just, you know, the writing's on the wall here.
Do you have alternatives that you can speak to?
As of now, we don't have any alternatives. Alternative would be to reinstall natural turf, which we had at Pacific when we first opened up in 2003, but the natural turf lasted till mid-October. Every year, we would have to have go out there, spend between 50,000 to 125,000 a year to laser level, seed or resaw it, and the natural turf will last till mid-October with the amount of use it gets.
So what would be the anticipated annual cost?
I would have to go back and work numbers. I would probably say close to 150, 175 a year, and we would need additional bodies to maintain, but as Authority member Ajinian said, that yes, professional sports, they're moving away from artificial turf, but professional sports play on those fields a few hours a week, where these fields are played on 90 to 94 hours a week, and the amount of warranty they get through with the kids playing, with the soccer teams playing, it's... it's, it's a challenge keeping it up to par.
Can I ask you an interesting question? Is there any significant difference between kids' injuries on an artificial turf as opposed to kids' injuries on a, a natural turf?
Let me inter, let me interrupt, because I don't want to get into a whole discussion of that. And we did do this life cycle analysis, and we looked at these questions. It's, I, I don't want to kind of dig all that up right, right now. That's not the purpose. I just, I just think, you know, we need to look at alternatives. That's my opinion. I mean, I'm one of five, but that's how I feel. And, and I mean, I feel like there was a day before artificial turf, and we, we lived. And there will be a day after artificial turf. And the question isn't just what's convenient, but it's also the health risk to the kids that are gonna be using it. So that's all, that's, that's all.
Mayor Brotman, I'm trying to support you in this, so I'm asking. So for, for what you have in front of us today, could we separate this out? And bring it back for a larger discussion just on this item and approve the rest?
We would need to allocate the 500,000 to another project in the low mod income in South Glendale area. So staff would recommend to allocate the funds to Serridos Park. We would need to rehab the entire restroom area and install or renovate the water feature play area. That park was built in 2007, and we, we would need funds eventually to replace that entire system. But in terms of, in terms of the artificial turf, I do wanna mention that we are doing away with using crumb rubber in all of our fields. We're gonna use organic infill, let it be sand and coconut husk, which is working out well in other artificial turf fields in Southern California with similar climate to us. So we are looking at different alternatives instead of using chrome rubber, which I've been told does have PFAS. The shot turf that we're installing at, up at the sports complex in Fremont does not have PFAS materials.
Well, that's not true. They would not say it didn't have PFAS. I asked that question. They said it's not detectable. They were very careful not to say there's no PFAS, because there is PFAS. It's just depends on the levels.
Mike, I have, did you say that GUSD, the schools have okayed this? They're, they're all for it?
Yes, when we met with them onsite, they're okay with renovating the field. I mean, they're working on an artificial turf project right now at Glendale High.
Okay.
So they have artificial turf at some of their schools.
Okay, so they're in support of this project?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we had discussed this before, and I thought we had an understanding. We had picked certain areas where we were gonna permit artificial turf. And now if we're gonna go back and break that, then I'm gonna go back and say, bring us any artificial turf proposals that you think are viable. Otherwise, that was our agreement. We picked two or three, and we said the others, we're gonna go natural.
Yeah, but this wasn't one of the two or three we picked.
This is one we maintained. Yes, it was.
No, the one that, the Pacific one, Councilmember Najarian, Housing Authority Chair Najarian, the Pacific Community Center one was the Little League Field that we were recommending to install artificial turf. That project was changed to natural turf in June of 2022. When we brought the LCA, council asked staff to change it from artificial turf to natural turf. So we're moving forward to a natural turf at the Little League Field, which is our multi-purpose field that's also at Pacific. This field is renovating the existing artificial turf, which is on the Edison Elementary School campus.
Yeah, this was not discussed. We did two, we did two artificial turf. Are we gonna have this discussion again? We're talking about how, you said 94 hours of play. And I don't know if any of you have seen those soccer fields and those play areas. The grass gets destroyed immediately. You get divots in the ground. You get injuries from that. You get dust, you get respiratory issues. It looks like hell. It looks like a third world country with a dust bowl. This is a very highly-used park with both community and school programs. You know, I mean, this is, you might as well tee this up for our, our discussion again. And I thought we put this behind us. I mean, there are some things that we have to say, okay, this was, there might not have been an explicit.
That's why I was surprised. We did put it behind us. That's why I'm surprised it's being new.
Look, it was an existing thing. We never said that, that it's open game for ones that we can't replace. That was not part of our understanding or our discussion. And if that's the case, if that's the way you want to do it, then I would like you to bring back every opportunity to place artificial turf on any grass that is being re-sodded or re-renovated. I mean, is that where we're at? No, it's ridiculous. Let's just stick with this, maintain it as an artificial, and stick to what we had a gentleman's agreement on, that no new artificial turf to be installed. And this is new. So all I'll say is I'm a hard no. You can vote how you want. I'm a hard no.
Well, I wasn't here when you guys had this discussion. So I don't know what gentleman's agreement there was, but I want to be educated on it before I move forward, because I, I wasn't present at the time. So if there's anything that staff can provide to me now for me to support this, I'm happy to do that. So can you walk me through? I'm sorry that this is happening here now, but if you can, if there are things that you can give me that address some of Mayor Brotman's concerns with respect to health risks, I'm all ears. This is happening now, or.
I don't know that we can do this here and now, because it, it is very complicated. And I think you're right. I mean, you should have a briefing on it, but it can't be as we're sitting here now. I don't think you're ready.
Yeah, I'm not ready, and it's a pretty long, extensive report. We did have a consultant come out and.
Do the life cycle analysis.
Do the life cycle analysis on artificial turf versus natural turf.
And things have changed since then, so we need to.
Mayor Brotman, City Council, Chair Najarian, members of the Housing Authority. It was our understanding that when it came to replacing the fields that we currently have that wasn't listed, they'll be replaced in kind. So natural turf will be replaced with natural turf and artificial with artificial turf. That was our understanding, and that's what our Parks Department has moved forward with. But it's, it's up to you how, how you want to vote today, and if you want us to bring that back. I don't know what would be the impact to this, the outcome of this report, Ms. Kavarian. We'll have to go back to CDBG and reprogram or come up with another project in case you vote against us.
Mr. Bulanikin, what's the lifespan?
On the artificial turf?
Artificial versus natural?
10 to 12 years for artificial, depending on the amount of play. Natural turf, you're looking at a few months, three, four months. And our, our fields will turn into dirt within three months, four months of seeding.
What's the total cost of this project?
We would need to get numbers. I mean, there is other construction that needs to be completed, such as drainage and so on, things that we need to work with.
And Mr. Bulanikin, will this come back to council for a word of contract?
Yes, this will come back to council. We're gonna, we will need to allocate additional funds through different funding sources. We will take this to the board as well, as well as city council.
And before it moves forward.
And if I may, and at that time, we'll get a report on the makeup of the artificial turf that we are, that is being used in replacing the old.
Yes, you will have the details of the specification for that proposed turf.
Okay.
Given that I'll, I'm gonna support this today with the understanding that we're gonna get a thorough report, and then in the meantime, if staff can spend some time educating me on this, that would be appreciated.
Okay, well, then I will, I will move item 2A.
A second?
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Asadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
No.
Is there a motion for 2B?
I'll move 2B. A second?
Roll call, please, housing?
Housing Authority members Ajinian?
Yes.
Asadarian?
Yes.
Brotman?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Parazian?
Yes.
Chair Najarian?
Yes. Okay, and our next item, please.
Our next item is Community Services and Parks Regarding Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnerships Act to Reprogram $169,290.27 in Undesignated Fund Balance from CDBG Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act to Various Food Assistance Programs. A. Council Motion Approving the Reprogram, Reprogramming of $169,290.27 in U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Committee Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round One and Round Three Funds Received Under the CARES Act of 2020, Returned from Various Programs as Recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee, Authorizing Submission of the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment to HUD and Authorizing City Manager or Designee to Execute All Agreements, Amendments, Certifications, and Documents Necessary to Carry Out the Reprogramming of, of the funds. B. Housing Authority Motion Approving the Reprogramming of $169,290.27 in U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Committee Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round One and Round Three Funds Received Under the CARES Act of 2020, Returned from Various Programs as Recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee, and Authorizing Submission of the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment to HUD. C. Council Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate Undesignated Fund Balance from CDBG CV1/CV3 Totalling $169,290.27.
Ms. Kavarian?
Thank you, Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, members of the housing authority. This will be my last and final presentation this afternoon. This is the funding for our CDBG CARES Act that we had received back in 2020 during the pandemic. We're asking to reprogram 169,000 in fund balance that was left over. We are asking to reprogram this to city and community agencies. I'll try and be as brief as possible. The recommendations for reprogramming came before you through workshops that we attended on CARES Act, and the recommendation was to program to food pantry assistance programs. We chose the city's elderly nutrition program and then community agencies who are currently CDBG-funded and provide these food-type assistance programs to receive this final funding. We're recommending 49,000 to the City of Glendale Senior Nutrition slash Services Program and respectively to 40,000 to Armenian Relief Society, Salvation Army, and Catholic Charities of Los Angeles for their respective food programs. Little background on CARES Act. It's a PPR tieback. It's a prevention, preparation, or response to coronavirus. So the funding has to go to something that is a PPR tieback. This is also a HUD national objective, so it has to go towards low and moderate income families or individuals. We received a little under $2.8 million in 2020 in round one and round three of CARES Act funds. And just as a historical perspective, when the pandemic hit, the city council automatically appropriated 572,000 to Emergency Rental Assistance Program, 572,000 to the Small Business Grant Program, and to the Senior Nutrition and Services Program, 287,000. In round three, again, we came back in December of 2020, and the Education Connection Program received 950,000. Medical Point of Dispensing received 608,000, and then Program Administration at 57,000. Much of the funding was returned and reprogrammed to 12 community agencies that expended over $900,000, leaving behind 166,000 that we're going to reprogram hopefully this afternoon. Just 80% of the CARES Act funds have to be expended by July 16th of 2023. We've already met this goal. 100% have to be expended by July 16th of 2026, and we are confident that we will get there. We've already expended 85% of the funding. We have a balance of 169,000 that's available. And the timeline would be that we would be issuing an 18-month contract to the Armenian Relief Society, Catholic Charities, and Salvation Army to spend down that $40,000 if approved today. Any questions or comments?
Questions?
I have, I had one question for, for Maggie, and I was interested in the rental assistance program. And I'd asked you, we had appropriated 572,000, 500 for that program. How many families did we assist with? How much per family?
Excellent question. It was $1,500 per family, and we assisted 380 families. And then I went back and I looked at the Small Business Grant Program. We helped 63 businesses with $5,000 each as well in that early start of the pandemic.
Very good. Thank you, Maggie. I'm, I'm very happy the way you're redistributing this, this funding to the different organizations and spreading it out over the community. So thank you for the, the foresight and the thinking behind that. Thank you.
Any others? No? So we've got a city council motion.
I'll move 3A and C.
3A, oh.
Second.
C, 3A and C. Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
City council members Asadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And I'll move 3B.
Second?
Second?
Roll for housing, please.
Housing Authority members Ajinian?
Yes.
Asadarian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Parazian?
Yes.
Chair Najarian?
Yes. Move to adjourn for council?
Second?
Okay, we're adjourned, and I'll move to adjourn for housing.
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready? Okay, calling to order a special meeting of the Glendale City Council at 2:48 p.m. on November 14th. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadarian?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Brotman?
Here. And may we have a report, please?
The agenda for Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on November 9th, 2023 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and I think we will shift the order a little bit in light of Councilmember Kasakian's arrival shortly, but let's start with item four.
Item four is Public Works Regarding Standardization of Ambulances, Ambulance Parts Maintenance Services and Repairs to Braun Northwest. A Resolution Adopting Braun as the City Standard for All Glendale Fire Department Ambulances and Dispense with Competitive Bidding for the Procurement of Ambulances, Ambulance Parts, Maintenance Services, and Repairs from Braun Northwest, Inc.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, just going over directly to Yazan Emrani, our Director of Public Works, to present this item for your consideration.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This report before you is about standardizing our cab or body type for our ambulances with Braun. This is the recommended manufacturer that has been, we've discussed with our fire department, and they, they would like us to utilize these moving forward. The advantage with, of Braun is that it can be attached to different chassis underneath, so it can work with different manufacturers, Ford, Chrysler, and et cetera. This standardization is gonna result in 30% savings, including when, compared to replacing, replacing both the body and the, or the cab and the chassis in general. And we would like to recommend this moving forward for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? I do have one, but a few. No, nothing? Yeah, I wanted. Yeah, I wanted, well, we talked in the briefing about the state of electric ambulances, and I did a little bit of research, and I don't know if, I know they're coming out. They've been coming out for the last couple of years. I don't know of any fire departments that have adopted them. It seems like private ambulance companies are. So, let's see, you know, the main one is this group, maybe you know them, Lightning E-Motors partnered with Rev Group, R-E-V Group. Anyway, they have these fully-electric ambulances, and they actually build them in South El Monte. They build the chassis in Colorado, but the rest of the vehicles in South El Monte. So it sounds like, from what I read, they're not ready for prime time. But my concern would be, if we're locking in with Bron, what happens if three years from now, these start to be commercialized, and we want to purchase them, but Bron is not in support of that? That's one question. And the other thing I just, if you could address, is the fuel type, because I also saw that Berkeley, the city of Berkeley, recently purchased some Bron ambulances. And they said they made a big deal about the fact that they're using renewable diesel. And I'm not really sure what renewable diesel, how it's made, or what it is, or how good it is, or how bad it is. But I thought it was interesting to see that they're using Bron, but they're specifically using this fuel type. So is there anything you know about either of these two points? The fuel type, and then this question of being locked into a manufacturer like this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. The first question that you had about locking us in, Bron actually is, again, just manufactures the body, the top, if you will. And so they don't really manufacture the engine, or the, in this case, if they're electric engines or whatever. So they, we can go with any type of chassis, any type of electric engines down the road. So we're not locked into, you know, using only Bron ambulances. They work with any kind of manufacturer. So once this becomes more of, as you mentioned, prime time, we would be, we would have that option to go with whoever's manufacturing the chassis and the engine. And then Bron would be just the body part, or the top part, if you will. As far as the renewable diesel, I am not familiar with that. I'm going to ask our Fleet Superintendent, Savada Amursumian, to come in and address that, if he is familiar with it.
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council Members, my name is Savada Amursumian, Fleet Superintendent. As far as the renewable diesel, I think the diesel that we are currently purchasing is renewable from our vendor, so we are currently using the renewable diesel.
And this is, these take diesel?
Yes.
These, these ambulances?
Correct.
Okay. If you could check that and get back to us, just to verify that.
Yeah, I could check that with the vendor and confirm that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So I can speak to renewable diesel because the MetroLink system transferred, transformed into 100% renewable diesel. It's produced locally, and it's made from plant and animal fats, no petroleum-based, no petroleum-based products. And the pollutants are much less. The carbon monoxide is about 1/10 of what typical diesel is. Nitrites are low, lower, and particulates are slightly lower as well. So that's basically what the advantages are.
That's correct. Our vendor, our fuel vendor, did recently propose all renewable diesel, and they assured us there would be no downfall in using it, so we are currently using the renewable diesel.
Oh, so you know for a fact we are? I wasn't, your first answer was a little...
No, no, this was as of about six months ago. They proposed this option to us, and we talked to a couple of other fire departments to make sure that there were no issues, and we weren't going to have any motor issues or anything. And they said no problems with it, so we told the vendor to go ahead and convert us to the renewable diesel.
So we are today?
Yes.
100% renewable diesel?
Correct.
All right, thank you. You answered my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, then, do we, if there are no other questions, we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Okay, motion, second. Roll call, please.
Council Members, Asadurian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Should we move on to number three? That's a status statement.
The mayor, he'd like to be here for number three. So we can just start with number one, back to number one.
Number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Item number one, Community Development Regarding Presentation of Proposed Amendments to GMC Chapter 30.11 Residential Districts Regarding Multifamily Zoning Standards and Objective Design Standards for Multifamily Residential Development. A motion to provide direction on the proposed concepts for multifamily zoning amendments and objective design standards, and to proceed with finalizing the standards for presentation to the Design Review Board and Planning Commission prior to returning to City Council for introduction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor, Members of City Council, Velia Azamataitis, our Deputy Director of Long Range Planning, will present this item and present concepts for discussion at council level and feedback as necessary. And this is a checking point in time, and we'll be back in front of you with more concrete, no pun intended, concrete ordinance for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Brotman, Council Members. As just was stated, this is solely a presentation before City Council of proposed amendments to Chapter 30.11, which is our residential district regarding multifamily zoning and objective design standards. The slide, would you, sorry. It's not, there we go. Thank you. The image you have before you is obviously the city, and it is, is the clicker not working? Apologize. It's, okay. It's not moving back and forth. Great, it was working. Okay, great. Thank you. So the areas highlighted in red are the multifamily residential zones in the city. You'll notice that these are typically between our major thoroughfares, the Verdugo Boulevard, Brandon's, or not between Brandon Central, but San Fernando Road, along Glen Oaks. And the project essentially is in response to public comments, and this is as recommended by City Council, that the existing multifamily standards often don't allow for developments to reach their maximum density potential. So what we have before you are two sets of amendments. One would be to update the zoning development standards to address those type of impediments. And the second part would be new objective design standards. Now, these are in response to quite a bit of state legislation, which is pro-housing, and in the direction of requiring objective design standards rather than allowing for subjective guidelines to address architectural design and development. Again, this is for recent legislation, such as SB 35, which is the Streamline Affordable Housing, SB 167, which is Housing Accountability Act, and SB 330, which also imposes objective design standards as opposed to having any subjective ones. Here before you would be the excerpt of the development table from our multifamily residential chapter. You'll note that we are not changing any of the zones themselves. We have four zones, R 3050, which is the moderate zone, moderate density zone, R 2250, which is the medium residential density zone, R 1650, which is our medium-high residential zone, and then R 1250, which is our highest, most intensive residential development zone. Density. Density is typically based on the lot area. Depending on one dwelling unit per specific standard or specific square footage of lot area, you'll notice as the density goes from R 3050 to R 1250, the density increases. Lots that are wider than 90 feet in width get even additional density. So there's basically an incentive to consolidate lots and then to maximize the development potential of a larger project. There's floor area ratio. Just for you to recall, floor area is basically the massing of the building. It's the square footage that's allowed per the lot, and again, that also increases as the density increases. Stepbacks. Current code requires minimums and averages on each and every individual floor. They're different on each floor, so as the height increases, the setbacks increase. Height, again, on lots that are less than 90 feet, the current maximum is two stories. If you're on a lot that's greater than 90 feet, you're allowed three-story. Just note that based on our current housing element, that's going to be modified. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail later on in the slide, but currently, such as the standard lot, 50-footer, you're allowed only two stories. And if you, let's say, are on a typical 100-foot-wide lot, you're allowed three stories. Open space currently is based on the number of units. You'd have a flat minimum of 40 square feet per unit of private open space in the form of a balcony or patio, and an additional 200 square feet per unit of common open space. And those would be found in courtyards, rooftop decks, and things along those lines. This table shows you how the density increases based on the zone. You're looking at a buy-right project in the R 1250, again, which is our high-density residential zone of 34 units to the acre. And if your lot is greater than 90 feet, you can go up to 43 units to the acre. The R going down below, as the density decreases and goes to R 3050, that would be basically where our duplexes come in. And the range in between would be a medium-density project. So in response to these concerns, you know, that prohibit projects from reaching their maximum density potential, one of them is the limiting standard of minimum interior setbacks. Now, these would be what we affectionately call the wedding cake standards, because as the project goes up in height, the setbacks in the interior and along the front go up. So you'll note that in red, again, it just mimics the wedding cake fashion. Another somewhat limiting feature would be our common open space. Right now, again, based on that 200 square feet per unit, oftentimes applicants either put the open space at the rear, and so you're not able to really utilize that for the rest of the project, or it's a token space, you know, that's not, that's only used for the units, again, that are located along the rear. We are proposing, as part of the first part, these amendments to our multifamily development standards, we're not proposing any changes to density, so density is not going to be increased. Go back. Floor area ratio, again, we're not proposing any changes to the maximums for floor area. Point out also that state legislation has approved additional density for projects between three units and 10 units. So those have actually been allowed additional floor area ratio based on state legislation. That's also been included in our code. We're not proposing any lot coverage increases, except we might consider increasing the lot coverage 50% maximums in the higher-density zones. Stepbacks. At this point in time, we are eliminating that wedding cake setback menu. What we are proposing, and I'll get again into this in a little bit detail in the next diagram or so, we're proposing new setback standards with options allowed for the developer to choose from. Height. We are, at this point in time, not increasing the height. All we are doing right now is allowing for three-story development on those narrower lots. Now, this would be consistent with the programs in our housing element. The housing element, it said, said our two-story height limit for 50-foot-wide lots is prohibitive, and that we need to amend it so that it would allow for three-story development. So we are addressing that housing program in our housing element by allowing, again, this is just for the narrower lots, the 50-footers, to meet that three-story limit, but no additional height at this time. Last but...
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
You're saying we're not increasing height, so we're keeping the same height in terms of feet?
Correct.
But we're just saying within that frame, you could have multiple floors. You could have three floors.
Correct.
So basically, you're squeezing the floors. You're saying they can squeeze the floors a little bit to fit in three?
So we're not, we're not saying that you can fit in or squeeze in the floors. What we're referring to is, right now, the code allows for two stories on a 50-foot-wide lot and three stories on a 100-foot-wide lot.
Right.
We are now, based on these amendments, are proposing to allow three stories on a 50-foot-wide lot. But because we also have additional design criteria, objective design standards that are going to require projections and recesses and undulation across the facade, that building envelope won't be a box, but it would allow for up to three stories in height. And so we do have diagrams to depict that, so...
Okay, but as far as the actual height goes, that's not changing.
Correct.
Even for those, even for those sites.
Correct.
It's just that we had this strange situation where we said you could go up to this height, but you could only have two stories.
No, and if...
That's right.
Mayor Brotman, Members of the Council, if I can explain really quick, you're correct.
The height is going to stay exactly the same. What I would say is that the prior code, that height and the floors were out of whack. Essentially, you could build 36 feet, but you're not going to make 18-foot one and second story.
Okay.
And what we were having the challenge with is that the maximum density at that point could no longer be achieved. Let's say a development maybe was zoned for 10 units that could fit on that lot. Because of that limitation, maybe they only built five or six. By allowing them to fit that additional floor within that same volume that was always allowed, now they can actually get to what we have always allowed in terms of density.
Okay. Okay, now it's clear. Thanks.
So this brings us to our second part, which would be the new objective design standards. Again, this is especially in response to state legislation specifying that we need to have measurable, verifiable standards in our code, not just guidelines. And so...
Sorry to interrupt again. Did you skip something on the last slide? Because I thought you were going when I stopped you on height.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you for bringing us back. So to open space, we are proposing at this time to update the common versus the private open space minimums. We're looking at a percentage of the lot area to be open space, and that's going to, what we're going to refer to as common open space amenity, COSA for short, all right? And then we would allow also for a combination of common and private. Right now, downtown, the DSP area, Tropico, they allow for a percentage, a requirement of open space, and the applicant can then choose, do we want it in private? Do we want it in common? And there allows for greater flexibility. So this would be the same for the new standards in multifamily residential zones. Again, going back to objective design standards, they would have to be measurable, verifiable. They're organized in the same format that we've seen for DSP and Tropico, which is based on site planning. Where's the building in relation to the property lines? Where is the building on the lot? Massing and scale, the height, the massing, and then last but not least, architectural detailing. We're utilizing the existing lot thresholds. We're looking at, again, the, a lot that's either less than 90 feet or a lot that's 90 feet or greater, and the greater the lot width, the more density, in this case, but not the more number of stories, because that's going to be uniform. Typical lots are, in the multifamily residential zones, are 50 and 100-foot wide, so we're going to show you diagrams for those as well. We are introducing that ground-floor common open space amenity. We're introducing modulation standards to ensure that the boxy-massing is reduced, and obviously to provide the onsite amenity. Last but not least, we will include architectural design standards, such as materials and window details and things like that, to ensure high-quality development. But for this particular presentation, those are not included. We want to make sure that your feedback on these concepts, on the site planning concepts and the massing and scale concepts are clear and concise, and then we will proceed with drafting the rest of the objective design standards. Okay, based on condition one, now, these would be the lots that are less than 90 feet in width. What you see before you are two examples of lot widths that are 50 feet wide. Options would be to either, one, and this would be showing the central courtyard options, would be to, on the interior, have a five-foot minimum setback and an eight-foot average setback along all interior elevations, and then to have a common open space amenity area of 10%. area of 10 percent. So you would have undulation, like a minimum standard, and an average standard, but in this case, it doesn't increase, you know, with the number of stories, but it's across the facade. Or the option two would be, you're going to reduce the interior setbacks to a minimum of five, of six feet, but then you'd have to increase the common open space amenity area.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
A couple of minutes ago, you mentioned, Copmine here, that they would have a choice between public or private open space. Now, that's, this is for public open space, these two options for the developer. How does that come in? How does the private open space come in to this plan?
Thank you. That's a wonderful question, actually.
Nope.
So you would essentially be required to provide 25 percent of your lot area would have to be open space, okay? So 25 percent of your lot area, and this is when I use air quotes, 25 percent of your lot area, okay? In these two examples, you're either going to provide 10 percent as a common open space area or 15 percent as a common open space area, and the remainder can then be provided in either a rooftop deck or in balconies or in patios. So it would be the remainder that would be allowed to be, you know, flexible open space, whether it's private or common.
So that would be, 10 percent would be private, they could choose private open space. Now, on the condition one, it says with the minimum average setbacks, 15, it says 15 percent for both of them. It doesn't say 10 percent for one. Is option one supposed to be 10 percent, COSA?
When you take a look at option one, the common open space for option one is 10 percent, and the option two is a 15 percent minimum.
Okay, on our report, it says 15 for both.
My apologies, then, that must have been one of those, we had been going back and forth with so many diagrams that I...
See, we're paying attention.
Thank you.
All right, so in that particular instance, option one, then they would have 10 percent public, and then they would have a choice to do 15 percent private, like balconies, that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Rooftop. And the other option two would be 15 percent, then they would be able to use 10 percent for the other. Okay, good.
Perfectly well-understood. And yes, I'd like you to refer to the PowerPoint handout then instead.
Do you have a question? When you say "public," you mean public or common?
I, no, no public. There is no publicly accessible open space requirement.
Okay, so let's not say "public," because that's a complete different...
There is no public. It's common. Correct, common.
So then, in the drawings that you're giving us, this is not public open space. It's just for, just for the people that live, the residents in that?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you for that clarification, but yes, there's no publicly accessible open space required in multifamily zones.
Excellent question.
Okay, so this particular slide shows the central courtyard option. Another option would be a corner courtyard, so that it's not in the center of the building, it's at the front. Same type of scenarios apply. Option one would have a 5 percent minimum, 8 percent average, with a 10 percent minimum common open space amenity area at the front. Or option two would be a standard six-foot minimum with an increased common open space area of 15 percent. Here, you'll notice this would be a massing model showing the arrangement of the massing towards the rear, and so where there would be a requirement to put the massing at the rear of the project site, so you maintain a low-scale, straight facade, the massing would be at the rear. And again, you're seeing the 5 percent minimum, eight-foot average, and if I toggle between the next two slides, you'll sort of see the difference in terms of setbacks and whatnot. We would also like to point out that we have been working with our consultant, Crandall Arambula, Mr. Don Arambula, who has been a great help with this particular project through the SB2 grant. He's the one, he and his firm have prepared these diagrams. They've looked at the feasibility of these particular standards, and they've essentially shown that these standards would allow for the development and to meet the maximum density potential. So these are buildable standards. Before you would be a condition two. Now, this would be a greater-than-90-foot option, showing a central courtyard. This has not been fleshed out such as the other two, so if council is supportive of these new standards, because right now, there is no standard to provide common open space on the ground floor, they just need to provide 200 square feet wherever. It can be at the back, it can be on a rooftop, it can be located within a courtyard. So these standards would essentially require the building mass to then be sort of cut down and to have this courtyard feature, whether it's in, the courtyards themselves would have to be in the first 80 percent of the building footprint, so they cannot relegate it to the rear and to have it only accessible for the rear tenants. If so, we would then continue on with these objective standards. To ensure that the building massing is broken up and undulated, we have vertical modulation standards. Again, the massing would be at the rear. This shows a typical 50-foot-wide lot, two stories at the front, three stories at the back, and then we would, then the elevator stairs and hallway volume would be allowed to project past that minimum height. For a density bonus project, now, these would be for projects greater than eight units typically, because the city's inclusionary housing requirement kicks in when it's a project, when there's a project eight units or more. So if there's a density bonus project, again, the massing would be at the rear of the property and not at the front. There would also be horizontal modulation requirements, so that there would be a minimum recess. The building along the, along any interior facade, if it's greater than 100 feet in length, it would have to have, 15 percent of the facade would have to be broken up, and you'd have to have a minimum recess of four feet with a minimum length of 10 feet. So essentially, there's creating this building mass of like one structure at the front and one structure at the rear, and it really breaks up the boxiness of an overall rectangular volume. So at this point, we're asking for council's feedback. Are the interior setback standards something that council wishes to see, that there would be options to reduce and eliminate, not to reduce, but to essentially eliminate the wedding cake setbacks and to introduce these two options, you know, with a minimum and average for one and a minimum setback for the other? What does council wish to see? Do you wish to see a common open space amenity? Or is that too limiting, you know, to have it on the ground floor? We can allow for developers to put it on a rooftop deck or any other options that council might wish to see. Massing of the additional height at the rear only, is that something council supports? Or would you allow massing to continue across the entire building and allow sort of the front portion to match the rear portion as well? Do you feel horizontal modulation is appropriate, vertical modulation? And we would love to hear any other comments that you may have as well. So that concludes staff's presentation. I believe that the consultant is actually online with us as well, and I'd like to introduce him, Mr. Don Arambula. And last but not least, I would also like to introduce our newest, one of our newest planners, Teresa Santalina. She is a senior planner who has joined the long-range planning section, so we very much appreciate her help and her expertise. She actually has quite a bit of background experience in long-range planning coming from the city of Monrovia, so we're very happy to see her as well.
Great. Questions?
Or see her and have her, actually, so.
Let's start with Councilmember Asatran.
Welcome to the Glendale family.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the ground floor open space.
Yes.
The model that you have presented for us is really public-facing. Was that, is that going to be the case for all moving forward, or is it just ground floor, but then it's, you know, closed off and you can't, you can't actually see the green space or the open space or the common space?
There would be a requirement that the open space be accessible from the street, so that there would be a minimum of eight feet. So in terms of visibility, there would, the open space would be slightly visible.
Would the public be able to use it?
The public is not, this would be, again, this is common, not publicly accessible open space, such as in the, this would be only solely for the residents.
Okay. So like that?
Any others?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I'm always concerned about the boxiness of the developments, and every time I look at the drawings, I see boxes. I'm a visual learner, I guess. And you talk about, you know, and I'm interested in vertical and horizontal modulation and undulation and all of those, because I don't want to see more boxes. Is this going to prevent that from happening? Can you be transparent with me and say that, yes, we're not going to allow these boxy developments like we have now? Is this going to prevent that from happening, that kind of design?
Mayor, Councilmember Devine, if you recall the process we went through when we did the downtown specific plan, we kind of brought this back in layers, correct? So this is the first pass, if you will. We're looking at the site planning, the massing, so it's going to look like a boxy mass right now. As we continue to come back with this, we're going to go through the other kind of layers of detail, you know, the horizontal, vertical modulation, which we'd like to get some input on if you have that today. And we'll come back with materiality, other elements that will start to relieve that. So, you know, similar to that process, this is kind of the first out-of-the-gate diagrams. They will become more complex, they will hopefully look less boxy, and same thing with the designs as well. We just need to move through each kind of iteration of this.
Okay, so that's kind of my question. You know, how will good design be assured because of these objective, the subjective criteria? Just...
I think that's going to come from that process, right? If we look back at some of the other projects that have been proposed, I'd say Hotel Indigo, correct? It's using the same kind of objective design criteria, what we saw is improved materiality. We saw improved public open space, kind of layering of materials. Those are the kind of details we'll move through. And do keep in mind that this does not change our current design review process either, so it will still continue to go through that system.
Okay, and the architectural details, I mean, actually, the, you know, the actual design, let's say, the, what it looks like, that's, is that going to be changed? I mean, is that going to guarantee us, or somehow are we going to get better design? I guess that's my question. I just want to make sure that we're not just kind of spinning our wheels and getting more boxes. And, you know, I love the fact that, like, on this particular, this is the one, vertical modulation for condition one, for the density bonus. Then, as you can see, it's one, two, three, five boxes, and is that what I'm going to be looking at? I mean, I just want to make sure that that's not what we're doing here.
No, again, it's the layering that's going to go on. Again, if you look back at some of the other processes, right, we started incorporating balconies, recesses, roof forms, things like that. So that's the kind of feedback. In order to achieve that good design, we'll be asking for that feedback from council as we keep coming back with this. Again, we're still at a pretty high level right now, so we are just kind of playing with large boxes.
Yeah, I got a suggestion that, and because, as I say, I'm more visual, that maybe we can have some sort of, in our, I don't know, in our ordinance or in our objective, in our standards, pictures or photographs of what we think buildings should look like in our city. What, you know, as opposed to what we have now, show what we would like to have, so that staff and the developers and council will kind of know exactly what we're looking for and what we're not looking for.
If you recall, again, DSP, we use that specifically in that document, right? We used images that we brought to council, ones that, you know, we asked your perspective and opinion on, and those ultimately made it into that final document, and they served as reference points and cues.
Okay.
As we move through designs there.
All right, and we'll do the same in this. So I like all of the, I mean, I'm all for being objective, because subjective leads us down the wrong path, I think, in all sorts of areas. So objectivity is good. I think having open space on the ground floor is a good thing on the ground level, the common space. I think that's good, especially since you're allowing a large space on the ground level and then maybe smaller space on the, you know, for each individual unit and perhaps up on the rooftop. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that perception? Okay. Yeah, so that's all, I think you're doing a great job. I think you're really making an effort to standardize, be objective, and that's what we need. And I don't know if you need any more feedback on massing, height, you know, me, I'd go eight stories if you could, but all the other improvements are good, I think, the standards. I would go for, I would approve all those.
Councilmember Najarian?
So do the, you know, when you talk about those courtyards, I don't know what number it is on your, one, two, three. Well, in your report, it's number seven, but condition one, let's say, lot width 90 feet or less. Those diagrams remind you of any historical designs?
Yes.
What do they remind you of?
Yes, those are specific, the, actually, Councilmember Najarian, those are the 1950s style garden apartments typically, so...
Go back a little further? Tenements, right?
Wait, I'm...
In a good way. I mean, tenements have developed a bad connotation, but tenement style is very much like this too, is it not?
I'm sorry, no, the...
I'll just leave that out there for you architects.
This is in regards to...
Let's say, condition one, with the, with the open area mid-building.
Yes.
With a building structure that wraps around it.
Can we see it on the slide while we're discussing it?
I believe that's slide nine, if I'm not mistaken.
That was, actually, tenements were a new design that was going to resolve a lot of the previous massing issues and congestion issues and quality of life issues that they were experiencing in New York and other large cities.
Mayor Brabham, Councilmember Najarian, I would say...
Like, what the hell is Najarian talking about?
Everybody's right here.
But I'm not saying it's a bad, I'm just saying, is that, it seems to me that that style, that what we're looking for here is trying to solve some of the same problems that they were trying to solve in the early 1900s in New York. Just a comment.
History lesson.
I believe...
I think you're exactly right. I think you're exactly right in that we're trying to resolve some of those issues where you have two parallel walls that run the full length of a site, put some mass, or some breaks in between. I would say the reference to the housing tenements, typically, they did what we call Texas donut, and they put it right in the center, but this is actually intended to bring a little bit of breathing room between site to site, because they are narrow lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That's why you're director.
I just, I do, I have another, another comment, another question, comment, where you have the, what do you call it, the horizontal modulation, we have the 10-foot-wide, when you have a facade, and then you have 10 feet, and then you have another long facade.
Yes.
What are the measurements there? 90 feet for one and 100 feet for another with a 10-foot, something like that?
An apologies, I'm sorry.
Because I'd like to, I'd like to see more, more breaks in that, in that facade, rather than just one, if you look at horizontal modulation, condition one, you're right here.
Yes.
You have that, both one and three are long expanses. Is there any way that we can put more facade segments?
Councilmember Devine.
Yeah.
Yes, so in, under option one, where there is a minimum and an average, that average would require additional modulation as well. So there would be another layer onto this horizontal modulation requirement.
That was on, was that on the, I'm looking, I've got all these.
It would be on the...
Is that a condition one lot width, that one?
Correct, on the site plan. So under option one, there's a minimum setback and an average setback. So they would have to have additional setback in order to meet that eight-foot average. So there would be required additional modulation across the building facade.
On which one, just option one?
On option one. So we could look at adding additional requirements for... So we could look at adding additional requirements for a building on option two.
Yeah, if they put the common space in the back, then the front, I'd like to see more modulation in the front, not just flat wall, 10 feet setback, and then another long wall.
We can definitely add that along those lines, yes.
That's it for me.
Hey. Councilmember Kasakian, I know you stepped in midstream.
I did, so I hesitate to get fully involved in this discussion, but I did convey my concerns and thoughts to staff during my staff briefing. The only thing I would, I don't know if we're going through individual scenarios or styles, but my only concern is that we take steps and measures, A, as has been mentioned by some of the folks that have written in from various neighborhood organizations, that we do engage the public to solicit their inputs in terms of what they see is appropriate in terms of architectural style and design in their neighborhoods. I understand the issues that we're trying to solve in terms of how sometimes massing ends up being incongruent with the needs of adding more housing and creates these very blockish, unattractive structures. What I would like us to see, what I'd like to see is a process through which we have some themes within parts of the city where it's appropriate. A few years back, when there was a construction, a proposed project up in the northern part of Glendale, when we asked, well, you know, why can't it look like this or that, the response from staff was that, well, there is no overarching theme in terms of buildings in that area. And the question that asks, I wanted to ask, and it's a little bit of a chicken and egg question, is, well, how do we get to a point where we have that theme? If there's never a theme, then there never will be a theme if we don't kind of impose certain guidelines in terms of what type of looks that we want. And earlier today, we were talking about how, when you go to certain communities and neighborhoods, you know you're in that community. Solvang has a certain look. Santa Barbara has a certain look. I'm not necessarily advocating for those types of styles in Glendale, but in as much as we can have certain preferences, whether it's pitched roofs and more natural materials versus just stucco facades, I think that that helps retain some of the uniqueness and character of some of our areas and neighborhoods where we're going to have larger projects eventually, after planting some of smaller units, be they multifamily or single family. So those are my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have more?
Mr. Calvert, I had emailed you the letter that we had received from the Vertigo Woodlands Neighborhood Association, our Commissioner Yurka. Could you please address some of the concerns that she raised and points she raised?
Yes. Mayor and councilmembers, I think one of the first things to touch on is this idea of greater density, greater mass. As we kind of outlined earlier, Mayor Bratman, this does not change what was already allowed before. The building height is exactly the same. Now we can actually achieve the density that's always been allowed for these sites, that some of these older or less effective development criteria were actually restricted. That was the charge, that was the ask when City Council originally set us out to do this work. You know, there's a number of other points in there I think were not related to the specific topic, so I won't touch on all those. But in terms of maintaining good design, I think that goes back to the conversation we had with Councilmember Devine there as well, is that there are layers and pieces that come to this. I think coming out and saying that this is not going to get us good results is just premature. We have a number of things that are going to come through, materiality, balconies, styles, actually, to your point, Councilmember Kasakian, there can be preferences, and we've done that with the DSP, where we put in things like materials that do help us get to maybe that style or that theme we're looking for in that area. So those things are all coming, that we're just not at that point quite yet. And for, I'll touch on the density bonus remark itself there. We know there are state laws that are changing, that are coming up. We are waiting to do that work because we don't want our work to either be nullified or redundant. So once we get clarification from the state, then we will return with that body of work. We've been working with the City Attorney's Office on that. And again, I just make a note that the overall intent here is to make sure that these properties can actually achieve the maximum zoning that has been in place for a while, that we relied heavily on in our housing element, to make sure that we could reach our numbers without having to rezone or upzone areas. So this is a key part of that for us getting there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the report, and I didn't get to say that too. And I think you really thorough in your answers, so I appreciate you. I'm good with all of it.
Okay, and I will, I don't want to go over everything that was said. I agree with everything, maybe not the tenement reference, but my architectural history isn't very strong, so I don't know. But I do agree with the sentiments you're hearing. I think I'm okay with all the recommendations you're making. This is not my area of expertise, so I will rely on staff and on the public input that's going to be coming in through this process. That's going to be really important for me. Ultimately, as you heard here, you know, it comes down to, are we going to get the quality we want? We want to achieve the density that we need in our housing element and to provide the housing we want for people in the city, and we also want to do it in a way that gives us the quality. So I do like the idea of maybe showing, you know, images of this, you know, things we don't like and why that would not get built here, and things that really look cool and like why that's the kind of thing that these would lead a developer to do. That kind of, you know, visualization of what we're trying to get at with these guidelines would be really helpful, at least to those of us who don't do this for a living. The other thing I was going to ask, oh, so that, the whole public input process, because there were a couple of comments about, you know, here we are during the day, nobody can attend, and we don't have any calls or anybody coming here to speak. But I understand there's a whole process coming. Can you just step through what we're going to do and where the opportunities are for the public to give us their opinions?
Yes, Mayor Bratman, we have already contacted the number of architects and developers that we usually see for most of our design review board cases, so they were made aware of this particular hearing and presentation of concepts. I have also reached out to the Glendale Homeowners Corridoring Council. We have a presentation before them at the beginning of December.
We got a nice letter from them, just.
Yes.
Appreciating you.
Thank you. Yes, so we will be making a presentation before them. We will also be reaching out to the other homeowners' associations that might not be active participants of the Glendale Homeowners Corridoring Council to offer to make presentations before them. There is also a list of other various individuals that we will contact, make ourselves aware. We will be making a presentation before the designer review board, so that will be either in December or the first meeting in January, so there will be an opportunity for those individuals to participate and give their feedback. We will be presenting this also to Planning Commission and then bringing it back to you, hopefully in the beginning, towards the beginning of next year.
Okay, and then, so the next time we see it, it will have these other layers already on it?
Correct.
Like, we're not going to comment on each of these things, like the architectural detailing and the, whatever, the materials and that kind of thing?
We will be vetting that with the different boards, with the designer review board, Planning Commission, and then bringing that back to you for your consideration with their input.
Okay, and then on the, I'll be finished in just a second, then I'll, on the, this point of the themes for different parts of the city, I mean, we did talk about in the briefing, you mentioned Santa Barbara and how they have like one style that's the whole city, and I get that, you know, we don't have that, we don't necessarily want that. But, yeah, I think there are a couple neighborhoods, like I'm thinking of the Rancho, you know, there are a couple neighborhoods that maybe, you know, we could work with them, with the groups that are, you know, active in those neighborhoods, to kind of think about maybe styles that would fit, and particularly like the equestrian theme I'm thinking of. But maybe there's something, maybe, you know, the folks up around, you know, in La Crescent, I have certain kind of things that they like, whether it's roofs and color palettes and blah, I don't know, it goes over my head. So I do like that idea, as long as, you know, we're not being too rigid about it, because there is something to be said about mix of different styles living together, especially in our downtown areas. But maybe some of these kind of more kind of neighborhood adjacent would be, that would be cool. So I like that idea. And I think, yeah, that pretty much covers it. And Councilmember Kasakian had another comment.
I'll just note that I think when you're doing the outreach, if you are going to be reaching out to homeowners' associations, that I would request that you do a broader outreach to the actual homeowners. I've said this time and again, that a lot of our homeowners are actually not part of the homeowners' association within the different neighborhoods, and so I want to make sure that we're being, or as we're doing outreach, we're actually doing it to a wider audience.
Oh, and late breaking news, we do have a phone call, so we will, we will hear from one caller.
Yes, we have one caller, Damian Sullivan. Damian, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everybody, I feel so special. Thanks for taking my call. I heard what Paula had said, which was her larger top-line concern, that what she's seeing are pictures of boxes, and I know that you've heard ad nauseam for many years, the concerns from citizens throughout, you know, all of the city council meetings and many different meetings about the concrete corridor and central. And I know when they unveiled the plans for Sears, for the Sears site, Malong Geyer, the same concerns came up from Paula and everyone, that you had already voiced your concerns to staff already many times in the past, that you don't want these designs brought back, you don't want these square boxes, you don't want to see this kind of, just box, 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 same materials, prefab, what they call landmarks. And I, my fear is that what Paula is alluding to is going to happen, if you go down the road of not looking at what Artie's saying, when he showed pictures of Pasadena apartments when you chose to tear down the Craftsman House, that was a survey, historic resource house, you're going to wind up with boxes that just have balconies put on them and different variations of roof tiles or, you know, vinyl versus tile materials. That's not changing, when all you're doing is trying to find a better way to build a box, all you're going to get is different Legos in Lego Land. So I hope that you will do what people have suggested to Paula. Come, take a look at all the great buildings that are a different look and have major words, garden apartments down mid-century, maybe they're Tuscan, and use those, make pictures that you can give to your staff. Let's do some talking with everyone about what are other ways to shape this so that the buildings look completely different, not just boxes with different kinds of balconies with bikes and things on them, because that's not changing. We're not changing things if all we're doing is building a different box. That's my feedback for what it's worth. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian?
I want to thank Mr. Sullivan for his call, for anyone actually watching this portion of the meeting in the afternoon, and just bring to my colleagues' attention and to staff's attention, back in April, the USC Price, Soul Price School of Public Policy had a short article called, "Why Do So Many Apartment Buildings Seemingly Look The Same", and it addresses this particular proliferation of these boxy podium-style apartment buildings that are prevalent, not just here in Los Angeles County, but across the country. As you travel and you see where new developments are, there's a lot of, you know, there may be some variations in color and, you know, slight materials here and there, but more or less, things are the same. And it's a pretty enlightening article, and it blames in part, or addresses the issue of zoning being part of it, also the building codes in some cities, and also institutional capital playing a role in it as well, in terms of constructions and loans and how developers are approaching these types of developments, so.
Thanks. Maybe it'd be good to pass that around again.
I will.
Thanks. Okay, any other comments? If not, does staff have the direction that it's seeking? Okay, then.
We don't need to do like alternatives?
Just, we need a motion to note and file, I think, right?
I think there's alternative one and two, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would have to move alternative one.
Okay, let me, I have to look back at this.
It was essentially a motion to direct staff, so if you're comfortable with the direction that staff proposed it.
Alternative one, I'll move, wait.
Okay, is that, I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
Alternative one is staff recommendation.
It's staff recommendation, yes.
Okay, that's what we want, okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Azadurian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. Okay, item two?
Thank you.
Item number two is community development regarding downtown noise ordinance review of standards and enforcement. A motion directing staff to conduct a noise ordinance study in the downtown specific plan area and modify enforcement within the area until which time a study can be completed.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Bratman, member of City Council. As you may recall, we currently have a modified noise ordinance only in our arts and entertainment district. It was a request by council to perhaps adjust the parameters of that zone, and this is going to require a sound study, noise study, I should say, noise ordinance study, and that will take a while. So we are here to request direction from council as to the enforcement and the parameters of that zone, and I'll turn it over to Tom Arsat, our Deputy Director of Community Development. I believe has a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Galanian and members of the council. We're really just bringing this before you today, based on the direction received from council, the entertainment levels in the downtown and how we can modify the noise ordinance, if that's the direction of the council, to better accommodate that. Within the areas that we'd like to study are if there's any parameters of dates. Right now, the only thing in our enforce, in our code that specifies is no amplified sound on Sundays or legal holidays. So if, you know, Thursday through Saturday is preferred, so if there's any date ranges you'd like us to focus on. And then also, if there is an interest in specific times that you wanted us to expand to, right now it's 10:00 PM. If there was an interest specifically for midnight or specifically 2:00 AM, if there was specific times you already knew you wanted us to look into, then we would look at that. And then how we should handle enforcement in the interim. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, it would take time for us to get through a study and then also make those modifications in our ordinances. So if there is a best judgment or modified on the weekends, just the best approach we can advise the police department to handle enforcement with. Thank you.
Okay.
Would there also be a discussion on the perimeter or the parameters of the zone? Did you mention that? As to, talk about time, hours, type of music, but in terms of the zone itself, creating an overlay zone or instituting a, well, tell me, how do we do it now? Does downtown specific plan have a separate zoning, a noise ordinance that's addressed in the regulations, or is it a citywide type of?
It is citywide. There are districts, not necessarily the downtown versus different areas, but it's what, what those areas of but, what the zoning of buts have different decibel levels. So if it was, we could study whatever areas and then change our noise ordinance to whatever parameters the council desired.
Councilmember Najarian, that's one of the, one of the directions that we are seeking.
Okay.
I believe you're talking about the boundaries of.
Right, the boundaries.
Mayor, councilmembers, the boundaries that have been defined per the prior meeting or discussion were for downtown. If there are consideration for other areas, we can incorporate that in here.
Okay, Councilmember Satchin?
I think when this item was first brought up, I actually asked, and I had support from some of my colleagues, for us to expand that study area to our other primary commercial corridors, which include Broadway, Pacific, Colorado, Glen Oaks, San Fernando, and brand north of downtown. We're just going through a study session now, and so I would like to see if there's support from my colleagues for us to explore these areas, since they're becoming very active, and there's an opportunity for new businesses and new opportunities in these spaces.
I would support that.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was what I was getting to. I support that. Yeah, and I would also, and looking at it, maybe, maybe we have not just one formula, right? Like, there's some areas that really do make sense to go to midnight, right? At least for me, I would say Thursday to Saturday. I'm still a little uncomfortable with Sunday and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but. I'm, I'm still a little uncomfortable with Sunday and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but certainly Thursday.
But we're talking about downtown. But we're talking about downtown area.
But people do live. I mean, you do have, see, the thing is, so, anyway, my point is, I think there's some places where it's appropriate. At the moment, I mean, I want to see what the study says. At the moment, I'm kind of, I'm a little nervous about Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, like, got to give people a breather. Maybe I'll be convinced, you know, otherwise. But anyway, but, you know, there's some areas that may be, you know, different. So, so I think, like, if we could, we, we wouldn't just have like a one rule for every area that we potentially look at. That's, that's one thing. And, and there are people that, you know, live in these areas. I mean, there are, we, we've heard complaints. I don't think from probably the areas we're looking at, but whether it's King's Kitchen or it's the G Lounge, we've heard noise complaints, and, and these ordinances aren't always followed. That's another part of the complaint. People will amplify the sound beyond, we think maybe the decibel level they're allowed, although we can never measure it, and also that they'll run beyond the times they're allowed. So if we are going to go to, to midnight in some places, and I support that, we also have to couple that with like enforcement to make sure that, yeah, midnight, it really does stop. And it's also not crazy thumping sound that's like so extreme that it drives somebody, you know, to whatever, to their wit's end. So that, we have to be really careful about people that do live adjacent to these areas. Yeah.
And, and I, I, okay, if I may, then, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I, I think we need this study, especially with studies on, what am I trying to, the, like restaurants, et cetera, that are embedded in neighborhoods. I mean, that we, I don't think we can have a uniform noise ordinance. I think we're going to have to carve out different areas. I'm, I'm all for extending the, the 10:00 PM time limit. I think if we want to make, I, I, I just think everybody likes to, to go out and stay out and, and after 10:00 PM, so I, you know, not everybody, not me, but, but yeah. So I would be interested in that sort of change as well, and, yeah. So that, that's my comment. We can't have a uniform noise ordinance. I think we have to make, take consideration for those restaurants, et cetera, that are embedded in neighborhoods. That's really important. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, if I could add something really quick on this, this conversation about different rules, sound levels, things of that nature. The way this study will work is essentially they'll go in and they will take measurements from each of these locations. They identify what the ambient sound level is, and then depending on if you want to go and make a more modest change, or make a change that require environmental review, you have a certain kind of window you can work within, and it's based off the sound conditions of that specific area. So whatever, whatever we study here, or wherever this goes, it will be specific to the ambient sound that exists there. Just so we're clear, we're not going to be kind of universally applying rules.
Mayor, I would just say the following. In terms of what it is that we're seeking, we definitely want to attract more business, more dollars, the longer people are in Glendale, the more money they're able to spend, all to our downtown area and the other business corridors. I support the expansion of the study area, as Councilmember Asatrian mentioned, and I, and I look forward to what it reports back. But in terms of where people live, you know, I look at a very desirable area that has successful mixed use with both residential and entertainment and restaurants, and we don't have to look any further. We have Old Town Pasadena, and people live close to it, and, you know, there are these buffer zones where when people move into a certain area, they have to be told that, you know, you are moving into an area that is adjacent to a business district where there is nightlife. In cities across, you know, the country, there is this movement towards, and we've been talking about mixed use for years, requiring developments to have commercial on the first floors, and then to require those uses to be regulated in a certain way, I think is contrary to what we've seen working in other areas. If you look at one of the most popular commercial areas in Glendale right now, it is residential right above nightlife, with Frank Sinatra music piping through the entire area almost all day. And I'm referring obviously to the Americana. The Americana has that kind of use. It hasn't scared away anyone from wanting to live there or rent there. And I think that there are certain areas, obviously, yeah, we don't want a predominantly residential neighborhood to have a nightclub in the middle of it. But I think in areas which are in the downtown, which are along these corridors, or branch off from these corridors, like, I'm thinking Broadway and Brand is the heart of the commercial part of the city. You branch off from either side of that, all the way up to City Hall, most of it is commercial. We have those types of uses along the way, and I think it's appropriate to have it, even if there is some higher density residential in the area. And the person who wants to live in those areas, who wants to benefit from that type of activity can. So I, I do want to support this study, and I look forward to what we'll receive back. Thank you.
I've mentioned this time and again at various council meetings, that at 11:30 at night, you have to leave Glendale. And I specifically have to leave Glendale to be able to get food and drinks at the same time, even on weekdays. And that's not just revenue loss, but it's also hindering our residents from being able to enjoy the city that they live in. I'm all for actually extending the hours. I'm interested to hear from my colleagues about days, but I, you know, I, I would do it seven days a week, because for me, it's, you know, you're, you have chosen to live in a downtown area. But if you're, if, if I don't have the support for that, then, you know, I would be willing to give up Sunday as a day. I mean, again, but.
I'd like to see all of it.
All of it, right?
I'd like to see all of it and see what staff brings back.
All right. And then, you know, I would say till, I would love to see it till 2:00 AM. And I would, in the meantime, like to suspend the enforcement.
I, I would support that, but I think we would, it would help us if we noted where the complaints are, while we suspend enforcement, that we note which areas are receiving complaints, so we can see what the mix is there, what the noise drivers are, what the density and what the neighborhood looks like.
Actually, on that point, if I may, Councilmember Najarian, I don't know if it's possible for you to do that, but I have heard time and again from restaurant owners, that it's like one person, literally, it's one person that lives in one building, that continues to call the cops. And so as you're bringing that data back to us, I would also like to know if it was one person that was making 500 phone calls, because they had nothing better to do, or was it really 500 people? So.
I don't know if it's they don't have anything better to do. I think it's they're not sleeping. So, and, and, and I, I know that what she's referring to, and I've been there, and I've talked to people that live in that area, and they've had the same problem. So I'm not for.
I actually don't know what you're talking about.
Hold on, one at a time.
Yeah. So if you, if you'd like to.
Can you, let, let her finish, and then I'll give you the floor.
I'm not for suspending enforcement. I, I think we should continue enforcement until we get the study, see what, where we land.
Mayor, Mayor Botman.
Councilmember Asatrian, monitor this.
Well, our, my colleague just accused me of something, and I don't know, I mean, if you want to specify what I'm referring to, then please go ahead, but I wasn't making a reference to anyone, and I don't appreciate that.
Mayor, yeah?
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
So I, I think that, you know, when, I'm not trying to delegitimize anyone's complaints if they complain about noise bothering them, but again, like other areas, other cities that have a more vibrant downtown, where some of our residents oftentimes go instead of staying in Glendale. And even though there have been multiple discussions on this dais long before I was here about how we can make Glendale a more exciting and more inviting place, I think it's important for us to have this. I'm for suspending the enforcement of it while the study is done. Hopefully, we can get it done soon. But lastly, I want to just say that I've also been in these chambers when there have been individuals who've come, sometimes it's been one, sometimes it's been more than one, who complained about the noise next to one of our local high schools on of all nights, Friday night, or that the band is practicing. And I know Councilmember Devine, as a teacher and as a coach, can appreciate the importance of having these types of extracurricular activities and the impacts they have on children's lives. And you know what? If you're moving next to a school and you don't notice a giant stadium with giant lights outside of it, you know, that's on you, I'm sorry to say. And you give up certain things while accepting others. It is a trade-off, and we need to also extend that courtesy to some of our business districts as well. You know, life is not perfect. I wish we could all have it our way, as a famous fast food slogan goes, but we can't. So with that, I don't know if you want to motion, or if any of my colleagues would make a motion, but.
I'd like to move alternative one.
I'll second.
And, hold on, let's, let's pull it up. I need to see what.
With the comments that we.
Hold on. Can you put up the alternatives here? Is that, was that on the slide?
I don't have the alternatives on the slide, but the, I can read it into the record if you prefer. Do you want me?
Okay, I have it. I have it. Okay. Suspend enforcement.
And to include the, the commercial corridors. Yes. Downtown. The expanded corridors that I had noted. Yes.
I would, if I, you know, I do have a concern about just suspending enforcement entirely. I mean, I, I can see, if we're moving towards something that's a midnight or even later, I mean, maybe we, we suspend enforcement up to midnight or something. Let's, let's try to find like a middle ground here, where we're not just saying you could do anything all night long. I think we're just asking for trouble. And I agree, Councilmember Kasakian, yeah. I, I mean, I've lived in New York, I lived in Shanghai, I lived in a lot of big cities where, that were noisy. But we, you know, we have to have balance. We ha, we do have residential neighborhoods that, residential, you know, buildings where people are, did not move in with these conditions, and we are changing the conditions. And that's okay. I mean, we need to gradually change the conditions, I get it, but we also need to be sensitive to people. And if it's just one person, it may just be that, that one person is the kind of person that actually speaks up, but other people just kind of, you know, just, just think like that's the way life is, and, and they just, they just grin and bear it. So it's, I, I don't, and, you know, I just want to be sensitive, that's all. But I do, I do, as I said at the outset, you know, I agree that we need, we need to do this, we're, we're, you know, we're, we've got this urban part of the city, and we want good life and, and active life. And so I, I, I'd support doing the study. And, and study all the days. I'm, I'm comfortable with that, too. I'm just saying, I'm a little like worried about it being 24/7, but let's, let's see, let's see what we get. That's all, so.
If I can make an alternate, what's, an alternative motion? Substitute motion to modify enforcement of noise standards in the downtown while the new noise, in other words, number two, alternative number two, just to modify, not to completely, because I agree with the mayor, that to not, you know, it's going to be a free-for-all. And I, and I, I just, I just think that that's not right for the people that, that live in these areas. It just isn't. And as the mayor has said, they didn't just buy these homes and know what was going on. Some, some of them have lived there for years, so I, I would make a motion for number, alternative number two.
Okay, so you're turning your. Thank you. We would just need some clarification on what that modification would be.
What modification?
What's, so are we talking until midnight, every night?
Midnight's good. I, I don't mind that. I don't mind that.
I, I would prefer 2:00 AM.
I think that's going overboard, for now, for now.
There's a substitute motion, I don't know if you can ask if there's a second, Mr. Botman?
Midnight, so my motion is.
Is there a second?
Everywhere else is juke. I mean, well, not everybody's 40 years old.
We're, we're talking about downtown. And we have all these young people that live in the city. But I mean, this is, we are, this downtown specific plan.
No, I don't, are we?
Depending on the motion that passes, that would include the commercial corridors as well.
But they're all commercial, meaning?
Outside of downtown, outside of the downtown specific.
Downtown. Yeah, no. We're not going into people's neighborhoods.
Oh, I don't know. There are some, there are some businesses on the periphery of the DSP that are affected and impacted, who would very much like to have this studied and have their businesses included in the zone of the DSP in terms of noise standards.
So it's the ones that, I was trying to include all the ones that I read off, if you want me to read off again.
The ones you just read? That's for the study you're talking about, right? That's for the study. I think we're all in agreement on that.
We made note of those corridors. I mean, there's a couple of different alternatives how you could go about the modified enforcement. We could do until midnight, Monday through Wednesday, 2:00 AM, Thursday through Saturday. It could be midnight every night. Right now it's 10:00. And we could exclude Sundays, or we could, we could include Sundays. So I think it's more about which kind of boundaries you would like us to explore as part of this study. We're going to entertain 2:00 AM, that we may want to consider that, and then if it doesn't go well, we can always go back and, and modify that enforcement process.
I want to know what bar goes open until 2:00 AM? Because I've, in a good way. No, but I mean in Glendale.
But it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Well, there's the bar part, and then there's the music part. We're talking about the music.
Well, maybe, well, maybe we can, maybe we can make a great.
It's not just the music part, it's the noise part.
Okay, well, well, it is the noise part, but that's.
Yeah, so if we're, someone's singing Happy Birthday, that's noise.
Oh. Not unless it's amplified.
Yeah.
Is it? No, it has to be amplified. We're only talking about amplified.
Amplified sound.
Okay, so, so what if we, in this modification, if we do modify enforcement until 2:00 AM, only in the DSP downtown, in, in the downtown entertainment area only?
And the commercial quarters suggested by Councilmember Kasakian.
No, not in the, because when you get out, like Councilmember Najarian said, when you get out there, then you start impacting neighborhoods, and that's what we don't want to do now. What, let's see how this goes, get the study back, and then we can move on. And if we feel that moving out into the commercial zones is, is going to work, then we, we can do it.
I think we should include the corridors. Can, so can we take it one at a time? Do we have enough?
Why don't you do the motion for the, for the study first, and then we'll figure out the motion, do a separate motion on the suspension or modification of enforcement?
Here's the thing, unless you let people make noise in those quarters, you don't know how affected the residents and the neighbors are going to be. So you kind of have to have a test case, and then get that information before us, and then decide what's extreme, what's a hotspot, what's appears to be fine with, with residents.
Okay, I'm just glad I don't live in them. I don't live there.
Can I make a recommendation, although it's not a motion, maybe somebody else will make a motion? What if we were to say 2:00 AM, certainly Friday, Saturday, and midnight for the other days, as an interim?
Yeah.
Until, and, and include the commercial corridors, include downtown, see how it goes. If all hell breaks loose, we could come back together here, and we can make a separate motion.
Yes.
That's right.
I like that. Can we live with that?
Yes.
Somebody make that motion?
So moved. Did you get that?
Okay, so now.
Wait. Do you have all the corridors that I mentioned, or do I need to read it back to you?
Yes, we have.
I would have gone back to the video, but if you had it right in front of you, I will take them again.
We, we can't go back and watch the video.
Can you just restate them?
Yes, I'm going to restate them. Should I find them? I got Broadway and Pacific. I can't find them, no, hold on.
Did no one really take notes while Councilmember Asatrian was?
Here we go.
You can roll the table.
Broadway, Pacific, Colorado, Glen Oaks, San Fernando, and Brand north of downtown.
How about Central?
Well, it would go all the way to.
Central, I think, well, Central is not.
Pacific will go past Central.
That boundary, I see.
Correct.
Okay.
Got it. Yes, Broadway, Pacific, Colorado, Glen Oaks, San Fernando, Brand, past downtown.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadurian?
Councilmembers Asadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Isn't that good, we had you in there? Okay, and what's our next item?
Our next item is Public Works regarding status update on Glendale-Los Angeles Garden River Bridge Project, a motion to note and file this report on Glendale-Los Angeles Garden River Bridge Project status.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Mr. City Council. It's very exciting to introduce this item. Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ramani to introduce the item, and then we're all gonna watch a 10-minute video presentation that should be a refreshing change.
All right, thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is indeed an exciting project for us, kind of our flagship, flagship project, project that we're doing. A flagship project that we're doing. It's a pedestrian and bike bridge, 320 feet, curvilinear bridge over the LA River that we're in the design phase right now. We're at 60% design. But we wanted to show you the concept that was selected before, and we asked the consultant to do a quick fly-through video and show you the simulated finished product. And then after that, we have our project manager from Biggs Cardosa, Mr. Eric Pfeifer, who's here, and along with us, they can answer any questions that you have. So with that, we can watch the video. All right.
Is this from Glendale going to the Griffith Park side?
Okay.
Is there more?
That's basically it. We wanted to show you the, the concept and where we are in the design and just a status update of where we are in this project.
Mayor and Council, we're not seeking direction. This is to note and file, but if you have any questions as far as funding, schedule, next steps, staff and our consultants are available.
Yeah, will, will I be alive to see any of this?
It'll be, it should be constructed by year 2028.
Was there, was there a separate bike lane? Was there a bike lane and then a pedestrian lane? Because it looked like there, there's kind of limited space on either side for both, or... So is it, is that the way it's designed? Bikes on one side, pedestrians on the other? Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
Maintenance?
So we, so we are in discussion with our partners, City of LA, on doing a 50, 50/50 maintenance, basically on the, we do our half and, you know, they do their half up to the middle of the bridge.
Security?
We are looking at security and...
That would be part of the maintenance and operations. Councilmember Najarian.
I wouldn't want it to be open 24/7. I think it would invite crime and fleeing suspects from one end of the bridge to the other.
How about till 2:00 AM?
And is that really all that, all the trees and infrastructure? I thought there was a scaled down, is this the scaled-down version, or is this the grand vision version that we're looking at?
The, we tried to stay as true as we could to the original design, which was kinda like the spaceship design. So the, the area that you saw, it's a little bit scaled down, but this is assuming that the, this is, some time has gone by, so the vegetation has grown and has filled those trellis areas a little bit. But it is a little bit scaled down. That's as close as we could get it to the original design that was approved.
Is there any plan for lighting on the bridge at night?
Yes, yes, definitely.
I would be for limiting access to it during after-hours, just like if it's going to be a park space, just as parks shut down at dusk. And it's not uncommon along the LA River, when you go towards, I think it's Atwater Village, there's these nice decorative iron gates in those areas along the LA River that restrict access to it specifically, I think for similar reasons. So I would definitely support that. My question asked, and I'm always very, I, I look at these renderings with a somewhat skeptical eye, because although it looks nice, I don't know if all the vegetation will quite grow in to make it look like it has such a nice green canopy. I think having a canopy and shade structures is nice, and I wouldn't want us to be completely wedded to the idea of having ones with living materials on them if there's other ways of creating shade and interest without it. Or alternatively, and I don't know how I would support it, but having semi-mature trees that, or trees that won't grow so large in size that could provide that. Because although I like that trellis with the vines on it, I have yet to see anywhere where those actually come to their actual fruition in this climate. So overall, it looks nice and exciting, and hopefully it happens before I'm no longer on this earth.
I'm excited for you.
Yeah, not surprisingly, I'm gonna take a different view on keeping it open, because if it's a active transportation pathway, you know, we don't shut the freeways at midnight, we don't shut our roads. If it's a way people are getting home, getting places, even late at night, I would rather see us take an approach where we maintain security with cameras, active kind of, kind of camera systems. I mean, that's kinda how, the way things are going. But let's think about it. I just wanna think about it as a, as a transportation path, like a, like a road, you know, that people are using to get from point A to point B. If you shut it at a particular time, what's the alternative route? That's the question. I don't know if they shut the, like, the LA bike path, if they do shut that at night.
I don't know if it specifically addresses the bike path, but those gates are very clear.
Yeah, I mean, parks are a different thing, but you have to think about people getting from point A to point B. And I know, like, I leave here sometimes at midnight, I'm on my bike, I'm riding home. Places that I tend to go through, like Verdugo Park, get the gates shut, and I have to go around and go on the road. And so if you're not on, on wheels, you don't really think about what that's like. That's all I would like to say. I know this is out, we have time.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, we are, as you know, we have a partner in this project, and we're still in conversations with them, and collectively, you will decide the best path moving forward.
Just trying to share my, my, you know, point of view, which is a little bit different. Anyway, okay. Do we note and file, or do we just? Okay, is there a motion to note and file?
I'll move to note and file.
Second. Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
Yes. What is next?
Adjournment.
I'll have to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 4:21 PM. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now, closed session.
Correct. Roll call, Councilmember Asadarian?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Brotman?
Here.
Can you report, please?
One, a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph D2 and E1 of Government Code Section 54956.9, two potential cases. B would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraphs D2 and E2 of Government Code Section 54956.9, two potential cases. C, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation, California Rifle and Pistol Association Incorporated, Edel versus City of Glendale, Edel, USDC case number 222CV07346SBJC. D was, D, conference with labor negotiators. The city-designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Galanian, John Tuktaiyan, Michael J. Garcia, Julian Van Miden, Paula Adams, Amy Moran, Greg Fish, Jason Bradford, and Laura Cal, Calty. The name of the employee organization is Glendale Firefighters Association.
Thank you. Do we anticipate reporting out on these items?
Mr. Mayor, we do not anticipate reporting out, and for the record, on item 1B, the two potential cases, one, the facts and circumstances giving rise to potential litigation arise from pay equity issues in the position of the city clerk, and the other item relates to the appeal of the small cell tower at 1544 West Kenneth.
Okay, thank you. So we will recess to close session.